Attorney General, Attorney Val Presiding. Please keep all cell off or on vibrate. Please remain standing for a prayer and a pledge to the flag.
I call a meeting of the Moore County Commission to Order. At this time, Mr. Steve Beedling will do our application and I'd ask that you please keep our Commissioner Carleen Brown in your prayers. She's got her report, she's feeling good, doing good, still got...
Happy Father, so thank you for this plan, from the message you blessed us with. Happy Father, as we bless Carleen Brown, Beth Martin, and also former Christian George Christian who passed away this next week, which will be in my own year on good prayers. Happy Father, we always pray for the failures, it's God for our freedom, which is a blessing and a thankfulness, so much for us to do this now. We also pray for this information, that we always do things in order to replace it in the other side. We pray for this community, that it always be strong. Happy Father, we hope, Father, just give the first things, just may we pray.
I'll call on Mr. Michael Bell to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Here. 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 Scott Haley. Here. Rodney Lee. Here. Gary Martin. Here. Ian Moffitt. Here.
Casey Owens. Here. Gary Fraser. Here. Chris Witty. Here. Kristen Ross. Here. Scott Rutherford. Here. Ron Savage. Here. Donna Smith. Here. Phillip Stoudt. Here. Old Taylor. Here. Here.
All right, we move on to item number five, adoption of our document tonight. Motion, Doc? Got a motion, Mr. Old Taylor? Second by Mr. Brad Dennis. Any discussion about our document tonight? Ain't none of all those in favor of the document, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passionately. At this time, we will, if you would like to make a public comment, have not signed up, we'll be able to go back to Mr. Hillis and sign up, but I am going to read to you the rules that bound this body here, and we will follow your public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board shall submit a request to the county executive, indicate the name, address, and speaker, to verify that the speaker is addressing of and or land over in Moore County, and shall include a brief summary on the subject matter on which the speaker intends to speak. Subject matter that is not germane to an item or items on the general will not be allowed. All requests shall be made by the person in need to speak must be provided to the county executive no later than ten days prior to the meeting, or they may sign and to speak during this meeting after approval of the general, until the time of public comment, at which time the speaker wishes to address the board. All speakers shall be limited to three minutes, and there shall be no more than two speakers on a single subject. So at this time, if you want to go back while we're doing our reports and anybody else wants to sign up, now's the time. And we will move on with our reports while Mr. Hillis...
Mr. Chairman, we need to read the minutes, I made motion we approve them, and then dismiss freely.
Got a motion, the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass as you announce. We'll move into our elected official departmentary of the Department of Moore County Health Department, Ms. Andrea Fox.
Good evening. You should have our report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Got a motion, Mr. Stoudt, second by Mr. Wilcher. Any discussion, questions about the report? The only thing I do have to report, we got the keys to the health department's new Jesse Kenny's building Friday at dinner, so we'll be looking to get that started.
Very excited.
Any more questions? All those in favor approve the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passing you down, so thank you, Mr. Stoudt. David Williams, judicial motion.
Thank you, members of the court, you have a copy of my report that was submitted by email. If you have any questions, this is our first time proceeding, so go right ahead, please.
Got a motion, Mr. Glenn, second. Got a second, by Mr. Bell. Any questions for Mr. Williams on the report? Ain't no questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passing you down, so thank you, Mr. Williams. We'll move on to the planning commission report, Mr. Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the report is being filed by Tommy Lee, and if there's any questions on any of these, I'm going to stick your tower this to answer, and the paint will get covered, get you answered.
Got a motion, is that, hear motion, Mr. Bell?
I'll move that.
All right, got a motion, Mr. Ron Lee, second. Second, Mr. Donald Smith. Anybody have any questions on the planning commission report? Ain't none of all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passing you down, so... Now we'll move into quarterly report for Moore County Animal Control, Ms. Sherri Bradley. Glenn, you want to have a look?
Mr. Chairman, everyone should have a copy of the report, and I'd like to make a motion if we accept that report.
Second by Mr. Stoudt. Any questions about the report for Moore County Animal Control, adoption center? No one has any questions, all those in favor approve the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, approve the now, so now we'll move to Mr. Cottrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, of course, you have my report. Any questions, I'll do my best to answer at this time.
Motion to approve. Got a motion, Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Hillis. Any questions on financial report tonight? If no one has any questions, all of the favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passing you down, so... We'll move on to our committee reports, budget and finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, budget and finance has nothing to report at this time.
Gentlemen, grounds?
I'd like to report, gentlemen, the grounds will meet Thursday at four thirty in the conference room, and we'll be discussing the ball project, and two, three other things, so we'll get the ball rolling on the health department, and everything else we're going to do out there. That's all, I have the report.
Economic, agriculture, and health.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, other than the fact that we'll be making a nomination for the IDB board, we have nothing to report at this time.
Agent Casey, Mr. Stoudt?
Mr. Chairman, this case has nothing to report at this time.
At this time, financial management has nothing to report. Move on to health and welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we met Thursday night at the animal control adoption center, and we looked at the road, it's been light, and we were thinking, oh, we should always be working on that, and also that we look for scanning and running, and we're still in November for groundbreaking over there, and we are having twenty-five dollars adoption fees right now for dollars because we are, we have our population is pretty high right now, so we're looking to get some dollars, like now, the adoption fee counts, spending a little bit, and shots is going to double.
Highway Bridge, what's your prayer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have nothing to report on right now.
Policies personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we met on July thirteenth, and we voted on one resignation and one 401K option, and we'll be voting on both those items tonight, thank you.
National Partnership?
Total population at the jail is two hundred and thirty, male population is one eighty-one, female forty-nine, and TDOC is fourteen. In new business, we're going to be discussing the three-year medical contract, that is line item number three. Number five line item is IT and computers for the jail, so we'll be discussing that whenever it comes up. Also, I want to announce the fact that the programs is going extremely well at the jail. We had a meeting and they were reporting on that, to the fact that we've just completely outrode the program's room, and they're taking bids right now for a building outside that they're going to do the construction program in. It's going to be, I think, a seventy by sixty, correct me if I'm wrong on that, building, looking at about a hundred thousand dollar deal on that. If you're interested in bidding on that project, I think it's open right now, is that correct? So, need people to bid on that as well, and then they're looking also upgrading the two classrooms that they've got out there, that's in the trailers, basically doing the flooring and everything to get them up to speed, and that will be where the snap-on, the virtual welding classes, and the GED classes, and a lot of other programs that they've got going, so they're really working really hard out there to do good things for our inmates, try to get that reentry program going, and I'm very encouraged by our sheriff and programs director and everything they've got going out there. I think we're moving in a positive direction, it really grow what we've been doing, and so we're really excited about that.
Safety?
Safety on our EMS side, we're up to about thirty-three hundred miles from this point, at a halfway point from last year, so our EMS can get these sanitation. Just pretty, pretty worked hard, and we've got our final position for the state of Tennessee on the go ahead, Morrison, Sykes, it was good to go, and we're creating all the electrical ease box, and a little bit of equipment, we'll be announcing it, and we'll be there as much as possible, so thank you.
Let your lady commit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just like it has nothing to report at this time.
All right, at this time, Mr. Hillis, any else, sign up for public comment. All right, we have two public comments, they will be held to thirty minutes, which will, I think, is the timekeeper, and I know these are hot, wintered from issues, but we want to conduct an organized meeting, so Mr. Candy, Glenn, what can you come for, and speak first. Now it starts on the first floor.
First off, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for all the children who have been killed by firearms in this country. Thank you. My name is Kathy Sutter with Finn, and I'm here to defend red flag laws, causing often protection to the people of Tennessee. According to the TBI in twenty-twenty, one out of every two women has experienced assault at one time in her life, and one of every three men has also experienced assault in his life. These aren't just numbers, these are your family, these are your kids, these are your aunts, uncles, cousins, niece, nephews, grandparents, these people all belong to you. In a recent poll by Vanderbilt, seventy-two percent of Tennessee voters want red flag laws, but they're cause they keep known abusers from legally owning to and obtaining a firearm. Assault is everywhere in our community. Just this past Sunday, the Southern Standard reported that a man was arrested for assault on a woman at the Walmart. The same man in twenty-fifteen was convicted of a prior assault on his grandmother. He should not have access to a firearm, he is a risk to our community and all of our loved ones, including yours. Without red flag laws, any abuser could purchase a firearm, even with proven record of assault. This is not about firearm control, this is, we should support, we should support that. To own a firearm is a privilege and a responsibility. Proven assaulters and abusers have lost that privilege when they choose to harm another person. Red flag laws make sure that someone who harmed another cannot legally arm himself or herself a firearm and amplify their potential to harm others. Red flag laws limit that harmful potential, and we must remember that the laws intend to protect all of us and limit the danger that others can inflict on us, and I thank you for your time.
Mr. Troy Gerald, Allen State, Allen Stark, let me speak.
When we're talking about gun laws and protecting our children, I know a lot of people are concerned about the Second Amendment, and that's used a lot. The Second Amendment was established to help the Constitution, for the states to protect themselves, as the United States was a young country at that time, and did not have a state militia nor a federal militia. So when people were guaranteed the right to bear arms, it was for that purpose, to help to defend the country, not to allow gun advocates and NRA to influence our everyday laws, and we need to protect that children. As an educator, it is hard to sit in a classroom while those practices are going on, and people not understanding what your educators are going through at those times. So I believe we should have those laws enacted, thank you.
We'll now move on to the new business section of our meeting tonight, item number one, Mr. Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you have in evidence, in our view latest report, I think, and Josh, it's a little here, it's a little, but it went up a little bit, but it wasn't as bad as I thought it could have, I thought it was a good number to be down, so we've got five years of that long pin on that, and I think it's a good deal for the county, I would very much support.
I hear a motion, got a motion by Mr. Glenn, I hear second, got a second by Mr. Christopher Ross. Any discussion on the sanitation, going direct? Nobody asked no questions, though, that's why we call Rome.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Golden?
Yes.
Charles Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Eagle?
Yes.
Stephen Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Nelson?
Yes.
Brad Hughes?
Yes.
James Thomas?
Yes.
Scott Haley?
Yes.
Rodney Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ian Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Witty?
Yes.
Kristen Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
Yes.
Rodney Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Phillip Stoudt?
Yes.
Paul Taylor?
Yes.
Lady Hook?
Yes.
Any more change of vote?
Item number one passes twenty-two, yes. Item number two, we call on Mr. Steven Elton.
Yeah, item number two is the three-year contract to extend the medical service for the Moore County Jail. This is basically just the extension of what we're doing to a three-year contract, and I'm sure Justice Harrison would speak more to that.
Got a motion by Mr. Elton, second by Mr. Daniel. Any discussion on the contract for medical services for the jail? Any questions? Then the last part, call Rome.
Yes.
Carl Golden?
Yes.
Charles Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Eagle?
Yes.
Stephen Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Nelson?
Yes.
Brad Hughes?
Yes.
James Thomas?
Yes.
Scott Haley?
Yes.
Rodney Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ian Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Witty?
Yes.
Kristen Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
Yes.
Rodney Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Phillip Stoudt?
Yes.
Paul Taylor?
Yes.
Lady Hook?
Yes.
Any more change of vote?
Item number two passes twenty-one, this is your option, we move on to item number four, Mr. Cottrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is motion amendment number one for this year, this is to establish grant revenue and expenditure line item for grant received by the Sheriff's Department through the Austin criminal justice program. Got a motion by Mr. Bell, I hear second, I guess I have a question now, any discussion on this grant for the Sheriff's Department?
Ain't none of the last part, call Rome.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Golden?
Yes.
Charles Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Eagle?
Yes.
Stephen Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Nelson?
Yes.
Brad Hughes?
Yes.
James Thomas?
Yes.
Scott Haley?
Yes.
Rodney Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ian Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Witty?
Yes.
Kristen Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
Yes.
Rodney Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Phillip Stoudt?
Yes.
Paul Taylor?
Yes. Yes.
Item number three, amendment passes twenty-two, zero. We move on to item number four, Cottrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is amendment number two for general fund this year, this is to clean up a few errors that were made in submission of the one, two of the adult recovery court grants, and establish patients for full-time employment, program.
Hear a motion, approve, got a motion by Mr. Glenn, second. Casey Owens, anybody have any questions about this? Any more questions, all last part, call Rome.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Golden?
Yes.
Charles Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Eagle?
Yes.
Stephen Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Nelson?
Yes.
Brad Hughes?
Yes.
James Thomas?
Yes.
Scott Haley?
Yes.
Rodney Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ian Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Witty?
Yes.
Kristen Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
Yes.
Rodney Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Phillip Stoudt?
Yes.
Paul Taylor?
Yes.
Lady Hook?
Yes.
Any more change of vote?
Item number four, passes twenty-two, zero. We move on to item number five, Mr. Chairman, this is a request by the Sheriff's Department to appropriate ninety-five thousand dollars of the opioid settlement funds we're receiving for Alaska this year, in order to purchase the managed IT support and help servers and several computers.
Motion for second.
Second by Mr. Bell, anybody have any questions? There's no question, but I'll ask part of call Rome.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Golden?
Yes.
Charles Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Eagle?
Yes.
Stephen Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Nelson?
Yes.
Brad Hughes?
Yes.
James Thomas?
Yes.
Scott Haley?
Yes.
Rodney Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ian Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Witty?
Yes.
Kristen Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
Yes.
Rodney Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Phillip Stoudt?
Yes.
Paul Taylor?
Yes.
Lady Hook?
Yes.
Any more change of vote?
Item number five, passes twenty-two, zero. Item number six is brought on by Mr. Brett McCady, step down, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Paul Baller on item number four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the Economic, Agricultural Committee has met, and we brought forth the nomination of Terry Hines to the Industrial Development Board, and that passed committee five-o. I make a motion that we nominate Terry Hines for the IDB boards.
Motion and second, any discussion? This will be distributed after term of Mr. Brett McCady.
November of twenty-four, October.
November twenty-four. Last part, call Rome.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Golden?
Yes.
Charles Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Eagle?
Yes.
Stephen Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Nelson?
Yes.
Brad Hughes?
Yes.
James Thomas?
Pass.
Scott Haley?
Yes.
Rodney Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
While working some of the security details, Wally got to meet some celebrities such as George Foreman in his first championship round, was on a detail to guard President Dickson and actually observed him. While working for the Detroit Police Department, Wally was able to finish his degree in education at Walter State. After four years with the Detroit City Police, Wally moved to Clearwater, Florida where he worked for ten years as a detective, also working with arson investigation, the bomb squad. Wally was an instructor at the police academy in those fields. Wally, Florida, Wally worked a large organized crime family, the Columbo family kidnapping and arson investigation. He also worked at the DEA Florida Bureau of Investigations on one of the largest drug busts on the Florida west coast at the time. In nineteen eighty-three, while working a case involving a Florida-based Wally person at the future role of his life, Pat Stufield, one. Pat had been able to supply Wally with information to help solve a case. Wally told Pat because she had helped him, he would take her out to lunch. Well, about three weeks went by and Wally hadn't called Pat, so one of her coworkers, they encouraged Pat to give Wally a call and remind him that he needed to take her out for, you know, Pat, speaking to Wally, sort of realized, oh, wait a minute, I think he's forgot. He got that impression so hung up. She, she was embarrassed and told this to a coworker. A few minutes later, Wally called her back and said, is there any time better?
Mr. Witt, say aye.
Aye.
For your folks. Mr. Witt deserved that. We move on to item number eight. Mr. Charles Dodson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution requesting the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee preserving the fundamental right of Tennesseans to keep and bear arms. Whereas the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution reads as follows. A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Whereas the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution was incorporated against the states in two thousand and ten by the United States Supreme Court in McDonald versus Chicago, reinforcing an earlier decision in District of Columbia versus Heller, emphasizing the individual right of citizens to keep and bear arms. And whereas self-defense and self-preservation are rights bestowed by God to all people. And whereas so-called red flag laws are repugnant to the United States Constitution, especially to the Second Amendment, because such laws, number one, potentially deprive law-abiding citizens of their rights to self-defense; number two, violate the due process by potentially depriving a citizen of property and self-defense based on presumption, accusations, and a prediction of future behavior and of a person, and number three, unfairly punish and infringe without a criminal conviction the right of citizens to keep and bear arms. Now therefore be it resolved by the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting the seventeenth day of July two thousand and twenty-three at clause section one. That the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee is urged to reject any so-called red flag legislation, number one, that infringes on the God-given rights of law-abiding Tennesseans to self-defense; number two, violates the due process clause of the United States Constitution by depriving a citizen of their right to keep and bear arms based on presumptions, accusations, or predictions of future behavior of a person; or number three, punishes a citizen by infringing on their rights to keep and bear arms short of a criminal conviction. Section two. That the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee focus on the root cause of the violent crime, including gun violence, utilizing better enforcement of existing gun laws to deprive violent criminals or adjudicated mentally ill of their ability to do harm and provide greater adult help services appropriate to treat conditions that may lead to violent crimes. Section three. That upon approval and signing of this resolution, a copy be transmitted to the legislator that represents Warren County, Tennessee, the Governor of the State of Tennessee, the Speaker of the Tennessee House of Representatives, and the Speaker of the Tennessee City. And I make a motion that we approve and adopt this resolution.
I have a motion on the floor, and I hear a second. A second motion together. Any discussion on this matter? Someone.
I would like to say that I believe this resolution is flawed simply by the vagueness. In the resolution, it speaks of so-called red flag laws. However, they are not defined. I feel as if this resolution was rushed and not given the appropriate attention as it deserves. Further, Warren, there is currently no red flag law legislation proposed for the special cause session in August. I believe we should hear the proposal from our governor before we have a response. I received this resolution one week ago. That is not adequate time for each of us to do the research, to make an educated vote. This resolution was non-drafted by Commissioner Dodson. This resolution was copied from another county that we are blindly trusting. Therefore, I make a motion to table this until Governor Lee has made an actual legislative proposal about his red flag law. Thank you.
I have a motion to table the resolution, and I hear a second. A second, as Thomas said. And we will now take a vote on tabling the resolution. Tabling the resolution. We go with yes. That's part of Caller Row.
Michael Bell?
No.
Caller Row?
No.
Charles Dodson?
No.
Eddie Ewan?
No.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Steven Joplin?
No.
Brad Hillis?
No.
Lance Adams?
No.
Scott Hill?
No.
Don Lee?
No.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Eddie Martin?
No.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Ryder?
No.
Chris Winkie?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
No.
Ron Savage?
No.
Donna Skid?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
No.
Old Taylor?
No.
Twenty-two?
No.
You can do my twenty-two.
The motion fails six, yes to sixteen, no. So now we're back on the original motion. Original resolution. Is any discussion on this resolution this time?
Just want to add something. I'm saying this for the sake of... We've kind of made this thing kind of... I'm sorry to interrupt, but... One of the reasons, one of the reasons why I voted... I'm gonna... Most everybody here is. It's not, I'm not trying to change anybody's mind, and I like the idea that Dodson came up with. I guess my issue was, I wish it would wait till after the special session and I was... See what else this question actually meant. I know again, there's a reason why I did that, but I would just say that I have a kind of personal issue with red flag and how it's perceived and all that. That I was planning to give the latest reason why, but just think about, you know, stuff as we go. It's not, it's not political, it's not against somebody kind of taking guns. I don't know who might come and take them on. But just kind of everybody kind of think about, you know, what we're doing, you know, going forward.
Any more discussions? Have any questions? Not unless Clark Colerone. Clark Colerone.
Arthur Bell?
Yes.
Carl Holden?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Ray Ewan?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Nelson?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Hill?
Yes.
Don Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Eddie Martin?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
I abstain.
Gary Ryder?
Yes.
Chris Winkie?
Pass.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
Yes.
Ron Savage?
Yes.
Donna Skid?
No.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Old Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Luther?
Yes.
Any more more questions?
All right. Resolution passed, nineteen yes. Two pass and one voting no. So we'll move on to item number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to establish the 401K plan as governed by the State of Tennessee in conjunction with TCRS. This would not require any county match from the county as an employer. It just gives our employees option to sign up for this. This would also not do away with our current program to be implemented.
Motion approved. I have a motion, Mr. Bell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rubble. Any questions on this resolution? This is just a additional retirement requirement that our employees can apply. Nobody has questions? Caller Row.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Holden?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Ray Ewan?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Nelson?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Hill?
Yes.
Don Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Eddie Martin?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Ryder?
Yes.
Chris Winkie?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
Yes.
Ron Savage?
Yes.
Donna Skid?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Old Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Luther?
Yes.
Motion passes twenty-two to zero. Number ten, the audit committee, Mr. Scott Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You had a copy of the Audit Committee's minutes on your desk. They met Friday to consider the annual audit. There were no new findings. The committee voted unanimously to approve and recommend approval for the full commission and I saw it.
I have a motion, Mr. Rubble, and a second by Mr. Moffitt. Any questions about the audit? Uh, Clark Colerone.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Holden?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Ray Ewan?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Nelson?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Hill?
Yes.
Don Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Eddie Martin?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Ryder?
Yes.
Chris Winkie?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
Yes.
Ron Savage?
Yes.
Donna Skid?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Old Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Luther?
Yes.
The ten passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to item number eleven, Mr. Colin Satch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a letter of resignation for longtime Judicial Commissioner Wally McLaren. I'd like to put this in form of a motion and I saw it.
I have a motion, a second by Mr. Stow. And now I'll call Mr. David Williams to jump forward.
Thank you, members of the court. Tonight, I just wanted to let us sort of honor Judicial Commissioner Wally McLaren. I'd like to tell the Warren County Commission, you know, everything that Wally has done. And, you know, Wally is not from this county. He came here, and we'll get to that point, but Wally was born in Highland Park, Michigan. We're not going to hold that against him. But he attended Henry Ford, Henry Ford Junior College, where he was American track for the two years there. He was on the list of Who's Who in college athletes for both years. His junior year, he obtained a full scholarship to Baylor University in Texas for track. He returned to Detroit and was hired by the Detroit Police Department. Wally was a patrolman and worked several special units, security details for the city. While working some of the security details, Wally got to meet some celebrities such as George Foreman in his first championship round, was on a detail that guarded President Dickson and actually observed him. While working for the Detroit Police Department, Wally was able to finish his degree in education at Walter State. After four years with the Detroit City Police, Wally moved to Clearwater, Florida, where he worked for ten years as a detective, also working with arson investigation, the bomb squad. Wally was an instructor at the police academy in those fields. Wally, Florida, Wally worked a large organized crime family, the Columbo family kidnapping and arson investigation. He also worked at the DEA Florida Bureau of Investigation on one of the largest drug busts on the Florida West Coast at the time. In nineteen eighty-three, while working a case involving a Florida-based Wally first met the future love of his life, Pat Stufield Willem. Pat had been able to supply Wally with information to help solve a case. Wally told Pat, because she had helped him, he would take her out to lunch. Well, about three weeks went by, and Wally hadn't called Pat. So one of her coworkers, they encouraged Pat to give Wally a call and remind him that he needed to take her out for, you know... Pat, speaking to Wally, sort of realized, oh, wait a minute, I think he's forgot. He got that impression so hung up. She, she was embarrassed and told this to a coworker. A few minutes later, Wally called her back and said, is there any time better than now? Wally's coworker asked him, who was he talking to? And he said, that fox at the bank. So Wally and Pat both felt an instant attraction when they met. Wally and Pat married in nineteen eighty-five and soon moved to Warren County, Pat's hometown. Well, Wally worked for twenty-three years with an insurance company. He was a working supervisor over five states working insurance fraud and arson cases. Wally and Pat are the proud parents of two girls, one boy. They have eight grandchildren and one great-granddaughter. They are active members of Westwood Church of Christ. Wally also coached track at Boyd Christian, helping provide some of the students with scholarships. In two thousand and twelve, Warren County was indebted to Judicial Commissioners. Thankfully, Wally's friend at the time told him of the opening, and Wally got the job in January of two thousand and thirteen. With Wally's vast experience, he offered, aided, and aided the young officers when preparing their cases. Wally was a valuable commissioner, and I'd like to introduce you to Wally McLaren, not only as my coworker, but as a wonderful friend. Hold up, Wally. Thank you, you for your service here and having that you're retiring for us, and we wish that we could keep you on forever.
I do too. I'm sorry I had to resign. I've got a metal condition with my lungs, and there's no cure for it. And I just couldn't handle the responsibility of going to the jail different hours. I wish I could. I spent probably forty, fifty years in the criminal justice system. And I want to miss the guys, the gals. You need to know, you've got a great Sheriff's Department here, and also the City Police Department and the choopers. We're very blessed with top-notch people, and it was an honor to work with each and every one of them. Thank you.
We thank you for your service. At this time, I've got a motion to second and accept the letter of resignation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we'll move on to item number twelve. Bring the little numbers.
Mr. Colerons. Eon Eddie Ray, Miki Russell, Harry Derek Ferengi, E A Russell, Elena Ruiz, Amanda L. Harvitz, Christina McInnes, Amber Morrison, Urban White, Pearl Horn, Evelyn, and Luke Henry, Jessica DeFanandez, Carla Carson, Cynthia Argentus, LeVar Gibson, Carla A. Bush, Beth Martin, and David T. Ritz.
Motion approved. Second by Mr. Halton. All those in favor of approving the numbers, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I should know. Item number eleven, under announcement. We've been in touch with Mr. Beth Martin, our property assessor, and she's getting stronger by the day, and everybody needs to continue to remember her prayers. On your desk, I have put together a little timeline. We've got the keys to the law on Friday. We agreed on all the paperwork, so I know. So that's kind of a rejected timeline of how we're... We may miss some of these, and we may hit some of them. But that's kind of the plan and the plans that we're going to try to follow through. And we'll move on to special presentation, Mr. Ricky. I want to introduce a guest.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Billy. I'd like to introduce Mr. Miki Quinn. Miki is the, I guess, the new director of the Black History Museum of Warren County. He is going to present a master plan for cultural center that we're looking to now get here in Warren County. He's better than I am, but I do serve on that advisory board, and we presented this to the city about over a month ago. We went very well to ask him to come and present to the county and get any questions or comments, hopefully after this time.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity to come forward tonight. I see that you have a copy of our master plan on your packet for this evening. If you'd rather me, or go to the speech I gave to the Board of Mayor and Alden, I can do that. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to go right ahead into that presentation. So if you want to indulge me for a few minutes, I'll go ahead and start. Okay. As Commissioner Ricky mentioned, my name is James Miki Quinn. I'm the museum director for the Black History Museum of Warren County, Tennessee. I am a native of MacMemple in Warren County. I retired from the military and the VA over the years, and I came back to want to give back to this area. And that's why I became part of the group that got the Black History Museum together. But just like to give you a little bit of history of why we came to this decision to expand the museum and look at building a cultural center in Warren County. In nineteen sixty-nine, well before many of you were born, a project came through MacMemple that forever changed the neighborhood. Our neighborhood, my neighborhood. It was called Urban Renewal. Like many things in life, urban renewal has good points and bad points. But I won't belabor those issues. But I think all of us will attest that a true urban renewal never happened. Just look at the area between worship street and Main Street on the east end of town. A SWOT analysis that was part of the city of MacMemple's twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two strategic goals listed high cost of housing and low ownership as a weakness. Same analysis listed creative homeownership as an opportunity and noted that parts of the city were being underserved, and this was a threat. Collectively, organizations like Young Men United and the Black History Museum feel it's time for the east side of MacMemple to have a new and modern urban renewal. It's time for the city of MacMemple to dust off that SWOT analysis and address the high cost of housing and low ownership. It's time for the city to work with private entities to develop creative home ownership plans and show a little love to an underserved part of the city. And we have a plan. The Black History Museum of Warren County, in cooperation with Young Men United and other groups, has a concept that we think will address issues identified in the SWOT analysis, make the east side of MacMemple a desirable living area, and benefit the entire county. We have drafted a strategic plan that would bring a cultural center to properly current own, currently owned by the city of MacMemple in the area adjacent to Ramsey Park and Bernard Gym. Vision of the cultural center is to house the current Black History Museum, provide adequate administrative space for Young Men United, and offer a venue for the local, white, Hispanic, South Asian, Native American, and other cultures to exhibit their historical and current elements of their heritage. As you know, the demographics of MacMemple and Warren County have changed since I was a teenager here. As a local venue for various cultural events, the center would be a melting pot of a very diverse population that is now MacMemple, Tennessee. The cultural center will be a catalyst for education. Education on what characteristics make our population different and what characteristics make our population similar. It will also be a center for educational vital subjects like English as a second language, financial literacy, and being an active part of the community. The center will also be the motivation for private investment in the properties bordered by the center. Potential homeowners are attracted to areas that have potential for modest return on investment. Areas that include community centers, greenway spaces. Perspective buyers and I are trying our best to be part of this private venture. We feel with a public-private partnership encompassing local, state, and federal funding, this proposal could become a reality and a stagnant part of MacMemple could possible. New affordable housing coupled with remodeled properties would add to the county's tax rolls and be a source of pride. This will also address MacMemple's creative homeownership opportunity mentioned previously. Ramsey Park has been an appreciative token in Young Men United's valiant efforts to save and restore the only remaining parcel of the Bernard School campus, the Bernard Gym, and the fulfillment of Wayne Wolford's vision of opening a Black History Museum has shown MacMemple and Warren County that Black Warren Countyans care about our history, but we also care about the people that make MacMemple and Warren County a great place to live. As I've often told the museum board directors, I think the museum has exhausted our pool of local tourists. In line with the county's recent decisions to consider joining the MacMemple Tourism Development Board to better promote the county, our plan is based on increasing tourism from out-of-state and even out-of-country sources. Our plan would help make MacMemple a premier city for inclusion, culture and diversity, and a destination location without disrupting the small-town atmosphere. But for tourism to flourish, there has to be an attraction to entice visitors. The museum has seen a trend where non-local visitors to the museum have also included a dining opportunity as part of their day out. This was reflected in visits by staffs from the Tennessee State Museum and Montlo State Community College. A reciprocal visit by the Upper Commonwealth Museum Alliance will also include lunch locally. As you can see, the residual effects of this plan will directly contribute to the economic impact of the city and county. And I foresee other opportunities for business owners as a result of the increased tourism. The museum board has already inquired about starting a capital campaign, and will do our part to seek private funding and state and federal grants to make this a reality. I know such adventure is more complex than a short six-minute speech can entail, but what we are asking for tonight is for the leadership of Warren County to be mindful of our proposal and ultimately provide us with your expertise on ways to make this dream a reality. If you need any further information, I will make myself available for answers to any questions you may have. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your presentation. That concludes our meeting. I hear motion, Mr.?
It's a move.
I have a motion, Mr. Halton, and a second by Mr. Platter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.